I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and just.
The first item on the agenda is reports of city officers, and I have a couple of comments to make. First of all, before we get started, I'd like to make a few brief comments about the recent news about Bob Kylie before we proceed with the rest of our agenda. Because this is an ongoing matter that was initiated by the Lake County State's Attorney's Office, out of deference to the proceeding and all the parties involved, the city will refrain from commenting on the specifics of the case. This body, along with many in our community and beyond, is well aware of the contributions that Mr. Kylie has made to our community over his lengthy career. His record is well-known by most of us in this room tonight. He always served with one goal in mind: doing right by Lake Forest and all of its residents. I'm very proud of how our team, from council members to staff, has remained focused on the job at hand and has conducted themselves professionally and capably, as we would all expect. The issues surrounding this matter, which we've been dealing with for several years, have been both challenging and very disruptive to our community. Regardless of your viewpoint on the substance, we can all agree that everyone, including residents, elected officials, and our staff members, has worked in the best interest of the city of Lake Forest. Finally, it is important that our community understands that the city did not seek this action by the Lake County State's Attorney's Office, and we don't know what caused it to be initiated at this time. We are not a party to the proceeding, but we will cooperate, if asked, with all parties as this matter moves toward resolution. Thank Next item on the agenda is, under comments by Mayor, is I'd like to introduce Sheila Henretta, who's the president of Lake Forest Caucus, to make a brief statement about their plans for tomorrow night.
This is on? Hi, everybody. I'm Sheila Henretta. I'm the current president of the Lake Forest Caucus, and I just am here tonight to remind everybody that we're having our annual meeting tomorrow night. It will be from 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Gorton Center, and at that meeting, we'll be presenting our slate of aldermanic candidates for the first, second, third, and fourth wards. A couple of them are sitting here in the room tonight with us. And each candidate will be giving a presentation, and voters will be able to attend and vote on our candidates to approve our recommended slate. And we're also going to have a special highlight. We're going to have our first-ever junior caucus report by a couple of civic-minded fourth graders from Everett Elementary School, so we're pretty excited about that. So we encourage all registered voters in Lake Forest to come attend and cast your vote. And for anybody who can't attend the meeting, we actually are going to have early voting. The polls will be open from 3:00 till 8:00 p.m. tomorrow, so just swing by, five minutes of your time, and you can vote, and we would love to have you. So, on behalf of the caucus committee, just want to thank all the residents of Lake Forest for supporting effective, nonpartisan local government. Thanks.
Thank you, Sheila. The next item on my agenda is, excuse me, the approval of the deed of gift of the original 1857 map of the city of Lake Forest to the Newberry Library in Chicago. Susan Banks will present.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Honorable Members of the City Council. Up on the screen there are some photos of the original 1857 map of the city, which we believe was uncovered in 2009 when the city moved its municipal services operations from Laurel Avenue to Field Drive. In 2015, with financial assistance from the Preservation Foundation, the map was professionally conserved and now hangs in the conference room at City Hall downstairs. In 2018, the History Center of Lake Forest, Lake Bluff, asked the city if the map could be relocated to its new museum, where it would be more visible to the general public. That inquiry prompted discussions regarding the most proper and safest permanent home for the map, which was appraised at $50,000. In January of 2019, it was determined by the Preservation Foundation, the History Center, city staff, and the city attorney that the Newberry Library in Chicago is the best home for this rare artifact. None of the city buildings nor the History Center are currently safe enough to house rare and fragile documents. The Newberry Library has special temperature- and light-controlled rooms for these types of pieces, and it stated that it is honored to serve as a steward of this historic document and grateful to the city of Lake Forest for entrusting it to its care, and looks forward to working with the city in the future, preserving and making this treasure known and safely available to students, scholars, and members of the general public. Sophisticated paper copies of the map would be made for the History Center in Lake Forest for City Hall if desired, and the city and the History Center will receive copies of new digital files at no cost. The Newberry would also transfer the map to its Chicago location at no cost. Pending approval, we will work with local and Chicago media to publicize the gift of the map from the city to the Newberry and programming opportunities. The Newberry ensured that all references and uses of the map will include the Newberry Library gift of the city of Lake Forest. And with me here tonight are Art Miller and Jim Upsetnik from the Preservation Foundation, and they have a couple of comments to make, and then after that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Just really two kinds of comments. One, about the plan itself. It's important to us locally because it's the first plan. David Mattoon did a lot of the heavy lifting on figuring out how it happened to be here, and one of the founders of the community's son, James Anderson Jr., was the surveyor in 1895 when golf hit Lake Forest and people started building estates, and they were whipping the plan out of the county building every day, and it was getting all rumpled up and disintegrating. And so, they hired Anderson to do a whole new plan, what they use up there now. Copies were made, I think there's copies of it, were given to the city, and then in 1943, there were more copies made, and David Mattoon has recently made even more copies that can be used to show the colors of the lots that were originally from the Lake Forest Association to help build the town versus help build the university. So, it's very early. It's a garden-city railroad suburb. It's probably in line, in this country certainly, maybe third in history. The first one was outside of New York City, East Orange, New Jersey, the Llewellyn Park, about 400 acres of development. Second was Glendale, outside of Cincinnati, similar scale. Both were served by railroad, little railroad stations at the time. This one, however, was 12 to 1300 acres. It was larger, and it had a university at the center, an institution, that had places for, it was a vertically-integrated institution with prep schools and college and university. So, that was probably the third one that was done. So, what to do about this? Its interest is mostly now scholarly. It was stabilized by conservators in 2015, which is a little different than being entirely fixed up. If you can figure the difference between taking my 2008 Volvo and stabilizing it versus restoring it, you get the picture. So, it's in a decent shape, and it can be stored, but it's probably not in really great condition to be out and being exposed to light and things like that. So, why the Newberry Library particularly? The Newberry Library has had a world-class map collection through the 20th century. It gathered steam in the '60s particularly. A local resident, Herman Donlap Smith, gave funding for a Center for the History of Cautography at the Newberry Library, and they started being much more intensively organizing what they had, and they are really world-known for their maps, and have been all through that period. As a consequence, about 1982, they opened a huge new facility behind the library that was temperature, humidity, fire, light, and theft-protected. Probably this side of the Smithsonian in Washington is probably the best facility for that. Providing all those things on a small scale is very difficult. It's challenging. I certainly tried to meet the challenge over several years at Lake Forest College, but getting all those things to work together on a small scale isn't easy. So, I think that we're suggesting that this makes the most sense, and it will give us higher visibility for the city of Lake Forest to be at the Newberry Library than to be here in town. We will get some, the scholars who visit that place and know about it internationally, this will arouse their interest. So, before questions?
Any questions or comments?
Alderman Rumel? I was wondering, when I looked at this, if we had spoken to the Lake County Museum at all about potentially either taking this original, or can we at least be sure that they get a copy of it?
Sure. I mean, the original, again, they would have the same problem we would probably have here in town of setting up the kind of facilities to house something that's this big, you know, and store it well. But, there's technology now to do copies, and the Preservation Foundation has talked about doing copies for local places, and I think we would be, well, I'm going to get in trouble here. But, I mean, I think we could figure out how to do that, for them to have a copy that they could show. Wouldn't be difficult. You know, good paper that would be, hold up pretty well.
Right. But, I'm wondering if, before we dedicate this to the Newberry, maybe if we were to talk to them to see if we could keep it in Lake County, too. I mean, I don't know what their storage facilities are, but...
Depending on what investment they would want to make in doing that, you know. But, so you're saying that we would postpone this, or we would maybe make a contingent on finding out what their situation is before approving this?
Yeah, if you don't mind. You know, I don't know what the feeling of the council is, and I don't want to say, but I just would, I would take that extra step. I mean, Lake Forest is a community in Lake County. I know Lake County just redid their museum. I have no idea what their storage facilities are like, or even if they'd be interested, but it would, I think, be appropriate to talk to them.
So, okay, so I can't respond to that, so...
Why don't we, at the staff level, I don't know if you guys are comfortable proceeding tonight, but we can certainly, contingent on any approval, reach out to the county and see if they have, you know, adequate preservation capacity. I'm not an expert on this, and so I defer, you know, to those far more knowledgeable than me, but if they have the ability to store and preserve the document, then certainly we could take your point into consideration.
Hi, I'm Jim Upsetnik. I kind of spearheaded this. Our main concern was making sure that the map was preserved, and David Mattoon, as Art has mentioned, has also undertaken, and we have digital copies made of the map. So, with the help of the Newberry, I was in contact with Matt Cushing of Cushing Printing that they use for reproductions. So, we can get a high-quality digital map on a permanent background, if you will. We already have quotes on that. And you also need to remember, this map is four and a half feet wide and seven feet tall.
Yeah, I just saw it.
Right.
The real thing.
So, it's not something you kind of fold up and put in your pocket, and so that was our concern, but, you know, we certainly could investigate that.
Yeah, I have no idea. I just think that it's a Lake County map, and we have a Lake County museum. I have no idea what their storage, and it may produce nothing, but I just think it's appropriate, as a city in Lake County, that we talk to our local museum about it, and at the very least, I think, offer them a good copy of it. If they can't, if we don't feel they can store it appropriately, as the Newberry can, then, you know, see if they would be interested in a copy, at the very least. But, I would investigate both, if you, that would be my suggestion. I don't know how the rest of the council feels.
Alderman Beidler?
Well, I was going to actually, I certainly hear what you're saying, and I think to be sure that there is a really good copy there would be terrific. I like that idea very much. It sounds to me like the processing that you all did, and in conjunction with the History Center, indicates that the best resource in the region is the Newberry Library, which I think very few people would dispute. This is a world-class preservation facility. So frankly, it sounds like, I'm certainly happy for us to look at, look and see what facilities the county has, but they certainly won't have a better facility. This is a, I think, comparable to the Smithsonian. This is an extraordinary place, and they've just actually done a lot of retrofitting and improving, and they have a phenomenal private and maybe otherwise support base, so they are, it's absolutely state-of-the-art. So, I feel pretty comfortable that that would be the right place for something this valuable. Also, people who are, you know, maps studiers and so on, will know that this is a good place to go. So, I would love to think that we, particularly of this Cushing, I imagine they are also state-of-the-art in terms of their copying. We get one, I really like the idea of Lake County having a copy, but I feel pretty strongly that if Newberry is interested in being so helpful to get it there, that's the place for it.
Yeah, they will pick it up.
And thank you for all the work you all have done, because this is clearly something you cherish, as do we. We want the best and the safest home for perpetuity. It sounds like, it sounds like you've made a good start.
No, I hear you, Alderman, and I'm not saying that it would eventually wind up in Lake County, but I sure would like to see it investigated, and I'm not sure, it's been hanging down in that room for quite a while, and if we could wait another couple of weeks, maybe, before we take action on this, and just talk to the local museum. I think it's just the right thing to do with, this home is Lake County.
Do you have other comments on that?
Yeah, I have a comment. I mean, I think it's a binary decision. I mean, it's home is Lake Forest, okay? And I would not support us moving it to Lake County and building a facility there to house it. If anything, we would build it here and keep it here, and we would invest to upgrade our infrastructure and the preservation capabilities in our community to have it here. We've already decided that that isn't feasible, and I really trust the process that you went through, because the natural place to keep it is the History Center. I mean, forget about Lake County. This is our town, and so, it's like saying goodbye to a child, almost, but, you know, if the best place for them is Newberry, and it's regionally a no-brainer based on its capacity, let's just make that decision, or let's invest in it as a community and rally to keep it here.
Alderman Gashgarian?
I hear what all parties are saying, but I think in respect and deference to Alderman Rumel, at least let us know if there's apples to apples. And let us have the opportunity for a binary decision, because I don't think it really is right now, and I think deferring the decision for two weeks, and I can't believe we're having a discussion about this. But, I think Alderman Rumel is right. If by chance they have the same facilities, and if by chance it provides access in the same safe environment, I think it warrants discussion then, but I think maybe just doing that extra bit of footwork and acknowledging and recognizing all the hard work you guys have done, at least, and truly, I, you know, I was immediately for the Newberry anyhow, but I think Alderman Rumel's right, and yeah, you're right, Alderman Preschek, it is home. Lake Forest is home, but we know that that's not an option. We don't know that the Lake County facility is indeed not an option, and I think it would make that decision all that easier and at least allow Alderman Rumel, the peace of mind, to know that it's in the best place possible. So, I would echo Alderman Rumel's request, just to defer this for one meeting and find out, and I think that that's a reasonable ask of her, and I would support that ask, although I would suspect that the Newberry is the best place.
There's another option here, too, which is, as was discussed before, we could have it, make the motion move along, not drag this out, but have it contingent on...
And move to table this motion? Can we table it to the next meeting?
So, well, I'm not sure we're done with our discussion yet, so Alderman Bushman has something to say.
I'd like to support what Alderman Gashgarian said. I think that does make sense, and again, it's not something that necessitates we act today, and if we have an opportunity to get more information here and look at the options, and certainly, we do want to consider, you know, not just the home, but, you know, the impact. Is it more important to be at the Lake County facility versus the benefits that we articulated in terms of Newberry Library? I think you have some balancing going on there, but I think you also have a very important point of, you know, having it digitized, having it replicated, quality replication, because I would certainly hope, you know, in here in this building here, we do get a replication that will replace the original, that will look as good, us amateurs, as the original. So, I think we all can share that, and Lake County can share that. So, I think there is something to share. There's only one original, and the question is where it can go, and I think it may behoove us to wait the two weeks to explore that a little further.
Other comments?
I really have a question for Art or whomever. Has the Newberry given, okay, has the Newberry given any indication on how this will be made available to the public? I mean, is it ending up in storage somewhere? Do they have plans to have it presented anywhere? My concern is that it gets shuffled away into a cabinet in the basement of the Newberry, and nobody hears of it again.
To the best of my knowledge, in talking with Jim Ackerman, who's head of the maps, and he was the person that we coordinated with on this, the map will not be displayed on a wall because it's too large. It will be stored flat. It would be available for research to qualified people, but it's not going to be, you know, hanging on the wall where people walk by and take a look at it and say, gee, there's a Lake Forest map. They'll have to pursue it, and they're going to make it available digitally, and, you know, that's pretty much where everything is going now, anyway, you know, digitally speaking, computers and all of that. But specifically, I can't answer that question, but I know it's not going to be hanging on the wall somewhere. That is for certain.
I guess one other comment I'd make about the Newberry is, this is a worldwide mecca for scholarship, and people that are interested in these kinds of things are going to make their way to the Newberry much more frequently than they're going to make their way to Lake Forest, or the History Center, or the Lake County Museum, and it's going to be in the flow of this academic discipline, which it wouldn't be pretty much anywhere else in Chicago.
Yeah, and I think in conjunction with Art pointed out with Hotchkiss, who, I forget his first name, but, Elmer Hotchkiss, who made the map and drew the map, and he has two other significant, if you will, plats around the country. So, if someone who is researching railroad towns, then we would be right in that loop with that, because it's connected through him. So, that's all I can tell you, really, but they are very excited about the possibility of receiving the map. It wasn't, they're at it, once Jim took a look at it, he just, boom, yes, we would like it very much, so.
But I would imagine researchers can look at a copy just as well, for the most part, anyway.
Well, frankly, I have a DVD of what was made. You put it on your computer, and you can zoom right into the street. You could just, it's right there. So, it's almost better than looking at the map, in all honesty, so.
Other comments? Yes.
I was just going to say, the Newberry is still going to be a world-class facility in a couple of weeks, and my sense is that it's not as though, if we postpone this, it means it's not going to happen. I'm sure the Newberry will be thrilled whenever they get it, which is the likely result. So, if it makes, you know, if it feels like we ought to at least inquire about what the map facilities are for Lake County, we know that for the future, and at the least, we can say to them, we will absolutely ascertain that they get a good version of this, and I'm sure that they will be thrilled. So, I would, if Aaron's going to post his motion, I'd be happy to second that, and let's get this done. But I do want to still make sure we all commit to these organizations that work together to find this map a good home. How much we appreciate that, and we do process here. And, you know, this is, and I think this is a, this is a good solution.
Agreed. Thank you very much for all your behind-the-scenes work on this, and I'm sure it won't go to waste, one way or the other. Thank you.
Do you need a table motion?
Well, I need to get some public comment.
Oh, good, okay.
If there is anybody in the public that would like to comment on this? Okay, there being none, I would entertain a motion.
It's already on the floor. There's a motion to postpone.
Could you restate, please?
I'd like to make a motion to postpone this decision or table this decision for two weeks, allowing staff to research the feasibility of comparable access and settings in the Lake County Library.
Museum, yeah.
Lake County Museum.
Museum, I'm sorry.
Do I have a second?
I'm happy to second that.
No longer a roll call vote, then? Just a voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion is tabled until our next meeting, and we'll, I guess, assign the appropriate resources to research the Lake County Museum. Well, that's all for my comments. Next item on the list is comments by the city manager.
Great. Thank you, Mayor, and members of City Council. I'm pleased at this time to invite our Director of Parks and Recreation, Sally Swarth, out to share some exciting news regarding recent changes at Dickinson Hall.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman. It's thrilling to be here tonight to give you an update on happenings at Dickinson Hall. I'm excited to announce the promotion of Tricia Schwal to the Senior Resource Manager position. Tricia has been with the city since 2008. She actually started her career here as a part-time employee at Dickinson Hall, and spent about two and a half years there, and then moved over to work in the Parks and Forestry area as administrative assistant. And about 2015, a position opened up for her to be the program manager, involved directly with programming and trips and such, and she made a bid for that position, and she won it, showing her love for that demographic and the programming that she could do with our senior residents. And so, over the course of the last four years, I've watched her grow. She has wonderful acumen for this area, and when an opening in the Senior Resource Center for that manager's position came available, we knew that Tricia was the person to put in place, and so I'm really looking forward to the track she takes us on, because I think we have a really promising future over at Dickinson Hall. Thank you.
Great. If there are no questions, then that concludes my comments for this evening.
Thank you, Sally. Thank you, Jason. Congratulations to our newly-promoted director. Next item on the agenda is committee reports. The Audit Committee is going to give its fiscal year 2019 annual financial report. So is that, so Vince Sparrow will lead the charge.
Thank you, Mayor, Alderman. The committee has seven members, myself as the chair, Bill McFadden, Dean Steber, Will, Bill Smith, Ty Magnussen, and then the Mayor and Finance Committee, Morris, as ex-officio members. We conducted four regular meetings in the current year. We did continue our charge given to us by the City Council to review the financial statements of foundations associated with the city, including the Senior Foundation, Correa Foundation, Police Foundation, Alawa Foundation, Parks and Recs Foundation, Ragdale Foundation, and Gorton Community Center. We have also established a standing calendar to ensure that these reviews are conducted annually. Let you know that there were no issues coming out of any of those reviews. At our October 17th meeting, the committee received a At our October seventeenth meeting, the committee received a summary of the city's fiscal year 2019 comprehensive annual financial report, or CAFR, including the auditor's communication. This also included two new audit opinions, the Government Auditing Standards and Consolidated Year-End Financial Report opinions. These two additional opinions are part of the state's implementation of new grant reporting guidelines, so there's nothing other than we have to comply with that. The city's independent audit firm, Baker Tilly Virchow Kraus, reported no findings as part of its audit report. In addition, just to be clear, the fiscal year-end nineteen audit opinion is unmodified or clean, as we say, so despite the fact that it's several pages long, the bottom line is, it's clean. The city has also not received a management letter issued for the past five years, which is really very good, and I think particularly commendable, given this year with the change in financial systems. The only other thing I want to really add is that I think this is largely because the city benefits from having very strong finance staff. So any questions from anyone? Anyone want to talk about government accounting standards, or?
Sure.
Alderman Morris?
Head of the Finance Committee, I just want to thank you for all the work you've done with the other members. As you say, it's not the most exciting sometimes when you're dealing with all these things, but you've done a great job and provided a great service to the community, so, thank you.
Well, other than being an economist and a dismal scientist, I don't know what could be more exciting than being a scientist. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council? Anybody from the public would like to comment on the audit report? In that case, I would ask for a motion to approve.
Second.
To approve the audit report, 2019.
And then we'll have a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Seven ye, zero nae, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a report from the Finance Committee. It's going to be introduced by Elizabeth Holler.
This evening, under Finance Committee, the City Council has asked to approve a non-binding estimate for the 2019 property tax levy. We did discuss this in the City Council Finance Committee meeting October twenty-first. This estimate is approved and requested for approval this evening to meet a statutory requirement under the Truth in Taxation statute, that at least twenty days prior to approving the tax levy ordinance, the council approve an estimate and determine whether or not truth and taxation requirements apply if the estimate is five percent or more over the prior year's levy. You can see from the summary here, the current estimate of the property tax levy for 2019 is thirty-three, is thirty-three million, seven-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand, one-hundred-and-eleven dollars. That's a four-point-five-nine percent increase over last year. Therefore, truth and taxation requirements would not apply. And so this evening, we would just ask for approval of that non-binding estimate, and then just note that there will be detailed discussion on the property tax levy at next week's budget workshop, November twelfth. And then the tax levy ordinance will return back to the City Council on November nineteenth and December second for first reading and final approval. Any questions, I'm happy to address.
No questions from the council. Public comment on the tax levy? Okay, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve the proposed tax levy, 2020.
Second.
And a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Seven ye, zero nae, motion carries.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is opportunity for citizens to address the City Council on non-agenda items. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on a non-agenda item tonight? Okay, there being none, we'll go on to our omnibus vote consideration. We have nine omnibus items. First is approval of the October twenty-first, 2019 City Council meeting minutes. Second is approval of the check register for September twenty-first to October twenty-fifth, 2019. Third is approval of an amendment to the City Council's schedule of regular meetings previously adopted by the City Council for the year 2020. Fourth is approval of a proclamation honoring National Indian Heritage Month. Fifth is approval of health insurance contract renewals and authorization for the city manager to execute contract-related, contracts related to the renewals. Sixth is an award of bid for the Mayflower Ravine Repair to North Shore Boring in the amount of thirty-four thousand, seven-hundred-and-ten dollars, and Canuck and Tree Experts in the amount of forty-five thousand, four-hundred-and-thirty-four dollars and sixteen cents for the combined project amount of eighty thousand, one-hundred-and-forty-four dollars and sixteen cents. The seventh is authorization to dispose of city property, sale of the existing nineteen ninety-one ladder tower truck via government deals to the highest bidder in the amount of thirty-two thousand, five-hundred dollars. Number eight is consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals, first reading and if desired by the City Council, final approval. And ninth is consideration of a recommendation from the Plan Commission in support of final approval of a platte subdivision for property located at two seventy-nine Scott Street and nine thirty-one McKinley Road, which is an approval by motion. Are there any items that anybody would like to have taken out and discussed separately? There being none, I would entertain a motion to approve the nine items.
Second.
And this is also a roll call vote.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Seven ye, zero nae, motion carries.
Thank you. The next item is an executive session pursuant to long, a long set of numbers citing code five ILCS one-twenty slash two C one-one. The City Council will be discussing threatened or pending litigation, and also the City Council will be discussing personnel. So I would need a motion to go into executive session and a second.
Second.
Second, whatever.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And for the member of the public...
A roll call.
Oh, it's a roll call? Oh, sorry, I did, yep, I missed it, my fault.
Alderman Beidler?
Aye.
Alderman Morris?
Aye.
Alderman Notes?
Aye.
Alderman Rumel?
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack?
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian?
Aye.
Alderman Bushman?
Aye.
Seven ye, zero nae, motion carries.
Thank you. I got thrown off by the code citation. So just, members of the public, please understand, there will be no further business conducted here in public following the executive session. We will return to public session and simply adjourn the meeting. So thank you all for joining us tonight, and we will be moving next door.